I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We begin this evening with a mental health proclamation from the mayor.
I'd like to ask the Inspector Care ladies to come up. And I'm not going to read this proclamation, but I do want to say a few things. Everywhere I go when I'm traveling, dealing with cities and counties, this is the number one issue that winds up being talked about. And it affects so many things in our lives today, from jobs to law enforcement to hospitals, I mean, our healthcare programs and all those things. So, and in those proclamations, it talks about that y'all dealt with 680 individuals in the last six months. I mean, that's, that just tells a story there. But I just want y'all to know that we appreciate what y'all do because it really impacts the entire community. Thank y'all so much.
I just want to say on behalf of Inspector Care, I'm Sandra Gillehausen. I'm fairly new as Inspector Care, but we appreciate the mayor and our wonderful council members. And I just want to give a special shout out to council member Harley for helping me get this going. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation by the mayor is for Teacher of the Year Day.
Okay, could I get our three teachers to come up? We're actually recognizing four, but I'll explain that in a few minutes. But I want to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas Ozark City Schools are committed to providing the highest quality education for our children, preparing them to become informed, capable, and responsible citizens; and whereas teachers play an essential role in shaping the minds and character of our new generation, guiding students with wisdom, patience, steadfast commitment, and excellence; and whereas educator selected for the distinguished Teacher of the Year honor has exceeded professional expectations, demonstrated leadership, creativity, and passion for teaching, while making a lasting positive impact on their students and the Ozark community; and whereas the City of Ozark takes great pride in recognizing and honoring the Ozark City School System and the outstanding educators selected as the 2024-2025 Teachers of the Year. And they are Brad Knighton, Quintana Ray, Amanda Gilbert, and Christie Rice. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Lincolnship, Mayor of the City of Ozark, Alabama, do here by proclaim today as Teacher of the Year Day in the City of Ozark in recognition of their, the four outstanding educators and in honor of their invaluable contributions to the children of our community. I urge all citizens to join in celebrating these exceptional teachers and their exemplary service, unwavering dedication, and commitment to educational excellence and for the vital role they play in shaping a brighter future for us all. We are one equal." We had, we had one young lady that was supposed to be here, Ms. Rice. She's such a dedicated teacher that she waited till the end of the school year to have her baby. Mr. Cartman, can I get you to?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to get a picture with her?
I said I will.
At this time, we will review the agenda for 5:30 p.m. meeting. So after a causal order and a prayer of political allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting. It was held on April 15, 2025. Council members, do you have any questions about those minutes?
No.
Okay. Item number five is in excess budget street expenditure. Would you like to speak on that?
Sure. So I'm going to provide some numbers real quick, just so that y'all can have it and kind of take it and digest it as we kind of go through some of the items that we're going to be discussing tonight. So I looked at some numbers as far as over the last three years back in 2022 compared to where we're at for the first six months. Just to do a comparison, our expenses back in 2022 were a million and three. This year so far, we're right at a million and seven. That's a 25% increase in expenditures over that same timeframe. Also, just a comparison on the revenue sales taxes, just to kind of take a look at that. Sales taxes in 2022 averaged about $825 a month. And in 2025, we've had an increase, $926 average thousand for the first six months. That's a 12% increase. Our overall revenues in 2022 were averaging $1.7 million a month. In 2025, we're averaging 1.8. That's only a 5% increase. So as we're looking into these expenditures, we have reached some statuses that I deem as what we consider unbudgeted because when y'all approve the budget, it's based on line items and department expenditures. So where we're at and in this situation for the budget expenditure that we have that we're presenting tonight, it's in excess of 100%. That line item is already at over 100%. We have five months left, you know, in this calendar year. And so what we're going to do, and I'm talking to the staff today, and we're incorporating any line item that is over 100% is going to come to y'all for approval. Just to give y'all an idea as far as where we're at on expenditures and, you know, they're justified. I mean, like in this case, it's to repair the boom truck. We have to have it. It has to be operational. Garbage trucks, they have to be operational. But like I said, it's just to inform y'all, also let you know, you know, where we're at as far as expenditures because everything is costing, you know, a tremendous amount of money right now. In this situation with this purchase order request, we did a purchase order, if you'll notice, kind of in the, towards the end, we did a purchase order for $8,129 to repair the truck. And then when it came back during that time is when we hit 100% in that line item because of the other expenditures that went to occur. Well, now, once they got into it and made the repairs, now that repair is $10,438.38. So it's increased, you know, to that. And like I said, it's just informational purposes, just to keep you aware of where we're at, you know, on our expenditures. And like I said, it's an unbudgeted, over-expensed expenditure.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions for Chris on the line items? Or why we're adding the line items? Do we understand what's happening with budget expenditures?
Chris, I have a question.
I see wheels starting, so I just want to...
So I know this time it wasn't that big a deal. We're actually holding up the purchase, the repair until they approve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The only problem I see with that is if we have a three-week span of the city council meeting, between meetings, something breaks right at the end of the other meeting. Ryan's got a garbage truck held up for three. Are y'all okay with us making the repair and approving it as a readers letting y'all know? Because I mean, we got an obligation to keep those garbage trucks, well, and fire trucks, for example. Right?
I guess my question isn't that it could be just because I am unaware of how it would work. Can you not as the CFO just increase a budget line item so that it's...
The only way we can increase a budget line item is if we have money coming in from somewhere. So you have a balanced budget that you approved. So if you don't have income coming in from a grant or from some other type of revenue generator, you can't increase a budget because if you increase a budget, I mean, I suppose you could, but you'll have an unbalanced budget at that point.
Could some of the excess sales not go to, go towards increasing on that?
But you're not guaranteed that you're going to have excess by the end of the year if you do it on a month-to-month basis. The likelihood is probably there. We hope to continue to grow sales tax, but...
We have the money in the general fund, right?
Yes.
The money would just have to be moved to take care of items like this.
Well, you have it in a reserve status. If you don't have it in a budget...
I know you don't have it in a budget, but we have it in the general fund.
But it's in a general fund.
That you would move and put, so you're going to have to pay for something. It's not a budget.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about, you know, not having money to pay for it. I'm talking about the budget.
The budget, I'm trying.
Right. So just informational, to let y'all know what's going on.
These are essential city services that we need to provide.
When I build this budget, of course, we all have to cut back because everybody, you know, had to share the money, the whole pot there. But I didn't just take an imaginary number. In fact, I think I increased it $10,000 over the previous year. I don't have last year's on me. But this, what he's referring to is a $75,000 budget. Isn't it $75,000? It's right there at $75,000, what I have as far as the line item. But I projected what we were going to have as far as repairs.
For repairs.
For repairs. And that's in sanitation, sanitation department. But this $8,000, now $10,000 repair he's referring to is not on our oldest garbage truck. This is on the brand-new, or it's not brand-new, the one that is a year old. Just, just, I mean, just turned a year old. I had never anticipated having to replace a hydraulic pump that operates the compaction arm. I had never, my entire time being director or assistant director, had to replace a hydraulic pump for that operates the mechanism of the compactor.
Is it not under warranty?
It's not under warranty.
Of course it's not.
Of course, a year is expired where the course is not under warranty. But I've never had to do that, and I could never anticipate that. And we've had, and this is something else to consider, is like the trash trucks. I mean, everything is just, we have more trash trucks now. We have five trash trucks. Five trash trucks. We run four trucks as far as that's our route that we kind of schedule them out. We have been down two trash trucks now for the last two weeks. To kind of combat that and keep y'all from getting calls from everybody, we have been working overtime. So it just is killing me one way or the other. So we've tried to make, you know, make it work. But if trash trucks, I don't have to pick up your trash. I mean, it would make our community look terrible. We can barely get around as it is. But your garbage, by law, I'm bound to pick it up. I will be in a truck, you know? That's one thing we have to do. And I understand exactly what Chris is saying. In fact, he can tell you, I didn't even argue with him. And normally, I'm really, you know, you know how I'm feeling. But I understand his viewpoint and willing to do whatever you want to do. But I think the mayor had a good point, too. I mean, I could even agree to, hey, on our trash trucks, hey, if it's a major repair that requires, you know, a purchase order, I'm fine if we have to come up here and wait in between council meetings. And we'll, we'll shift around to do whatever we have to do. That would be fine. But for our garbage trucks, I mean, these are like, these are wear items. But, you know, it's not anything that was operator's fault or anything that we had it done. We inspect our trucks. Each, each driver has to inspect their trucks each morning. Has a sheet they have to turn into the sanitation director each morning. So, you know, they do their due diligence. It's, you know, these are just items that just wear.
Yeah. It's, it's a necessity.
Oh, yeah. And I, and I don't...
My point is, right, I don't receive the item purchased. Now, if you have to email me or call me, well, okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I guess the question is, if you're in a, like a, so Ryan just stated for something like that, he'd be fine waiting. What is the rule if we have to hold an emergency meeting? What if something...
24 hours.
Yeah, if something truly needs to be repaired really, really quickly and we need to get it done.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with if we are going over budget.
Right.
Just us being aware of excess expenditures.
Budget is a guideline anyway. Am I not correct? And we're, we're responsible for city services. They can't have anything. So he can't pick up garbage, protect trucks around. Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on that particular line item? Okay. Item number six is an East Gate park expenditure.
Okay. So kind of similar situation. We're already at 114% of the budget for the East Gate Business Park, but it needs a new roof.
Yeah.
It's an unbudgeted expense.
Ozzy, would you like to speak on that one?
I have some.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. We have repaired the roof of East Gate, of the East Gate Gym, as many times as we could. It has gotten to a point where we can no longer do any repairs. That roof is original from 1940 years ago, you know, when it was. So we have looked for companies to, to do that work for us. It's only a portion of the roof. It's only a portion that's the roof that cannot be repaired. It has to be replaced. So it places, we got bids out, and the cheapest bid was $15,000.
$15,000. Okay. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Ozzy or Chris on this roof repair?
One best thing, it's got to be done.
Yeah, I agree. And especially after all the work we've just put in.
Yeah, it's a lot of money to be ashamed to let it go to waste because of the work.
All right. And Ozzy, if you will just stay right there because item number seven is to approve the mayor to execute an Alabama tourism department grant.
So good news. We received a $4,000 grant to help fund the Crowded Festival. I would like to use this money to cover the cost of the bands that would get the festival. If you would approve the grant I received, it'd be wonderful.
So is this for next year?
This is given to this, this past year.
For next year.
Okay.
They have been paid.
Yes.
Right.
So for that, since it was unbudgeted, it can actually increase the budget.
That's correct. And I went towards that.
And we were saying...
Yes.
Thank you.
This is important, I'm going to get this straight.
And council members, do you have any additional questions for Ozzy on this one? Thank you. Okay. Item number eight is to approve a change order for renovation for the Flower Center. I'm looking up there.
We're going to ask for a change order on the Flower Center. The existing project was just to build that wall up. And we ran into a existing problem that didn't bother that neighborhood, but it was on Flower Center. We had a leak up there. It needs to be taken down and finished. In order to finish the project, we started moving.
So take down more of the building?
No, no, just a brief section.
Here's the roof.
Council members, do you have any additional questions on approving this?
The change orders come from...
I think it's $5,000. I don't have a witness. I think it's lower than $5,000.
Yeah.
57.60%.
16.
But you can't fix those parts, you can't fix that.
That's right. What it is is a flat spot. It's TPO, the rubberized top roofing. And they can't put the metal up the sides until they put that in there where it counts over there. So it's kind of got some...
I saw those pictures. Yeah.
Council members, does anyone else have any additional questions?
No.
Thank you so much. Item number nine is discussion on the Innovate Alabama Project for the Ozark Technology Center, MOU, and then awarding.
Okay. So this was a project that is going on with the technology center. Y'all had last, well, not last month, in March, approved the funding side of it. So when we got ready to move forward with the preparing the PO request and doing the expenses, we found out that there had already been a company in place to possibly, you know, do the whole project. Kind of found out after the fact. So we called a meeting and tried to come up with the resolution for what we needed to do. And that's the reason that it's been brought tonight, is for y'all to decide which route we need to move forward with it. The company obviously would like to do the entire project themselves from start to finish. I did have a conversation with one of the partners. Actually, all the partners were on there, and we ended up talking. And he actually offered up a, an alternative to do it. It does not benefit them to the most because it would mean that they would have to bid out individual projects to them in order to do it. And the whole question is, is the bid law and our accounting purchasing policy, which requires, you know, it's to be put out. And so that's kind of where we're at, is trying to decide which, which route to go. Allow them to do the entire project or let them do the project, but bid it out to other companies in order to do the completion of the project. Because obviously, you know, the $183,000 that we have a check for, we want to proceed with that. I mean, obviously, it's an improvement to the technology center. And if we want to do that, we want to do it for approval.
Okay. So council members, do you have any additional questions or questions for Chris on...
Can I speak on this?
Two, yes, yes, Holly would like to come up. So if you're understanding what he's saying, there are two different ways that we can list.
So to, to explain the option where they would do the whole thing. So they explained the exemption called sole source. And so what they do is they, they handle the grant process from start to finish. They gather the information, they put together the grant, they install the, they, they basically manage the project, put the equipment in place, and then they warranty it for two. I mean, they, they come back for two years and make sure everything's in place. There's no way that from the time I found out this grant was available that I could have done all of this, gotten the process through, and gotten the funding. So the sole source being that they're capable of doing all of that work. Where other companies, you know, we could have pieced together this and that, but it would have been a lengthy, tremendous process to do that. Whereas using the sole source exemption, we can allow them to do the whole thing.
So we can do that with no problem legally. I'm asking you.
Look, I'm, I'm just going to state my opinion on it, and that's all that it is. Because, you know...
Well, I'm right on this point.
Yeah, I was like, I see him getting up. We're going to, yeah.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, it's, it's the state bid law, but there's also an accounting policy. It being qualified as a sole source provider is somewhat questionable. Because you can't tell me that there aren't other companies out there that can actually come in and do this. So that's why we need y'all's decision on it as far as whether or not you want to declare them a sole source provider or, like I said, and I'll be honest, it makes me feel more comfortable for them to bid it out and cover the bid law. But that just makes me comfortable. It's not, it's not my decision to make. It's just my opinion.
Attorney, yes?
There, there are substantial numbers of exceptions to the bid law. And if we took the position that everyone was really clear, we would be foolish because they're not. But they're there. And they are there because our legislature has chosen to say, you bid, but you don't have to hear. And we've got one of those that, when you deal with the technology that we're dealing with now, you're more likely to have sole source than you are if you build and build. So, I mean, that's what we're dealing with. But in addition, we have the policy of the city that, that, and Chris can explain the policy of the city. And then we have, you know, do you have a conflict between state law and local law? Hopefully, we won't have to get into that. I think it would qualify. But again, I have not written an opinion on it. I just have seen. There's also a couple of other things. One is, says that if you have a high degree of skill for a project, and that's, high degree of skill is necessary for a project, then you can, and if personalities are pleasing, swear to God, that's what it says. You can have, that's an exception to the bid law. I, I had to read that a couple of times. But you see what I'm saying? We've got the bid law here, and we've got hundreds of exceptions to the bid law and hundreds of attorney general's opinions. I, I think the biggest thing here is the city's policy. Is how, how can you conform to the city's policy? And is, is that going to be changed?
Holly, didn't we find out that it's been done several times in places?
Yeah, 30, at least 34 cities in Alabama have used this company and done these projects with them. Other communities that I spoke to said they had also used the exemption of sole source or professional services because of it being technology-related.
Council members, because everyone had a chance to read over the two documents that were provided. The first document was the competitive bid law that, that Chris provided to us. Two is the F Partners Innovate Alabama Grant Project where they are detailing what has happened up till now and why they believe they qualify as a sole provider for us for the exemption. So if you have both of those and you've read over both of those, that is where we have to...
Make our decision.
Make our decision to say, yes, we can move forward with them as a sole source provider using that exemption or no, as Chris is requesting, use them, but ask them. Well, what he is suggesting is to use them, but request that they bid out their services to comply with bid law.
Which way would we get the best job?
Yeah.
And also with the city.
Well, then that's, that's...
Well, they answered the best job. I, you know, I do not know. I mean, I'm not qualified to do that.
Four or five different people. Somebody's got to oversee it.
So that's the, but that's our decision to make. Do we want to stick with what has already been put in place or request that this company, I guess, proceed it and do bid law? So that will be, that will be what everyone has to make up their minds for.
What is our city committee advisors to do?
Let me say, I, I didn't know of this until right yesterday, I think. So I'll be glad to prepare you an opinion, but I think this is something that needs to probably move on. What I've got back up to say, that this is a concept that has been recognized many, many times because we employ engineers to go out and find money. And when they find the money, they get the project. This is same way with architects. You find us a grant, we'll build the building, you get the project. That's done all over the state of Alabama. That's done all over the state of Alabama, all over the country with competitive bid laws. So, that's okay with professionals, that's okay with engineers, architects, and we do that. Computers now have come into their own as far as where do they stand? My son made a speech at Rotary Club to tell that I don't know much about computers, I think. But, I know if they go get the money, they want the project. And that's why they did it. Now, where, where we should draw the line, I don't know. We may not have another project like this, but they, they secured the money, is that right?
Correct. I mean, we provided them information to help them put together the grant and create the project.
So, this is, so this project would not even have been funded or not, this company?
Correct.
This project was also done this way in Enterprise.
Joe, if I could ask a question, do we need to act on the MOU tonight? Because that has not been brought before the city council for approval.
Yeah.
So... Yes?
I understand what you mean, Sid, but according to the attorney, our policy is in the way now. The question is, did the other cities have a policy in place like we have?
Yeah.
Who did that?
Well, yeah, I mean, ultimately, doesn't matter because it's our policy and it's our policy to make up for it.
Right. Do we rescind the policy?
We don't have to rescind the policy. You're always welcome to make an exception to your own policy. But then if we're continuously making the exception, then you go, is this something we need to do? But, that's why Attorney Adams said, is it a policy that we need to look at it? But that's why this whole conversation is happening. Okay, so, as far as the MOU, if you were looking, there's MOU that was agreed upon in November of 2024 to engage them for the grant services, for the project and everything. So, all of this has to be ratified by, by us if the project is going to be moved, is going to move forward as a sole source provider. Correct? Yes. So, that's why item number nine says the MOU and the bid awarding. Because we have to, in essence, approve two different things. Do you have any questions on that? So, when time comes, do y'all have any further discussion or what would we like to move forward doing? Well, I guess I could need to ask the official question at 5:30, but...
I'm only favor waiting on the council's opinion. He said, he said he could have one tomorrow, I guess, right?
So, having an opinion for us, I need to, okay, so, I'm not opposed to that. Will that, are we under a timeline?
Not an absolute deadline. I mean, the sooner the better, but there's, you know, not an absolute deadline.
So, two weeks won't kill the project or anything like that?
Right.
Okay. So, then, at that time, we just know we need to take it. All right, thank you. So, with that, I will go out into our audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items?
Excuse me, please. We're trying to add that lease agreement.
Oh, yeah. No, it's in my other email. Is it in the separate email? Yes, it is. Item number 10 will be the lease agreement for Blackman Body Shop. Would you like to speak on that there?
Sure. What I had asked Joe to do was put together, they were under a month-to-month with the current owner, and so I'd asked Joe to put one together, and I had, it was set at $750 a month. I asked Joe to do it at $400 a month for the simple reason that we were going to be out there doing work in and around them, and we didn't, you know, feel like they all continue to pay the same amount with us. They're doing, kind of being in their way, so to speak. So, I've discussed it with them and they're aware of it, but I just wanted y'all. And we set it up as a four-month lease and then it goes back to month-to-month until, you know, they did relocate.
Okay, council members, do you have any comments or questions on adding that as agenda item number 10?
Maybe they said that they were in agreement with you.
Yeah, we talked about it earlier today.
Our only question would be is after that month-to-month, how long do we feel that you guys would be giving it to us?
Okay.
Month-to-month.
Give us just a moment, Ms. Blackman. I'll get right back to you on that, okay?
Okay.
Do not like the smart attached technology.
Yeah.
Do not like it. Actually, it's smart. Okay. Okay. Council members, do you have any questions on the lease agreement? Okay.
Well, I'm the one who's, what they agree with. They said they were.
They're in agreement, but we just know that they will have an additional question in just a moment. Okay. So, that being the last agenda item, are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Yes, sir? You'd like to come up?
Well, not agenda. I'm sorry, not agenda item.
I just listened to heaven.
He said, "Not agenda."
Agenda item. So, would you like to come up and ask that question?
My question would be, if we agree with this lease agreement, if it comes by the end of August, are we going to come up at the end of August and you guys come out and tell me you've got to be out for 30 days? Our biggest thing is we're still trying to find someplace. There's no place in Ozark. We've looked and we keep looking and we don't mind you guys being, you know, around doing your work, whatever. We are starting, gonna try to start doing some improvements with the fence and painting and everything. So, we're going to be making improvements also within this next four months. So, our biggest question is, is if, if come August, August 30th, you know, we've got the lease until August 30th, August 30th, are you going to come up and tell us we've got 30 days? Or are we going to have enough time from there? You know, you're not going to come up all of a sudden and say...
Okay.
I can promise you, as slow as city government works, August is not going to be an issue.
Okay. That's our biggest, you know, that's our biggest thing.
We've got so much to do in this project.
Right, right.
Y'all will be able to stay there a good while.
Okay. That's our biggest thing.
We start on the other end.
I was, yes.
You're not starting on the other end and come around?
Here's the other thing, like, let's just also be very real about this.
Yes.
I could, we could all sit up here and say this, we don't know if this is going to be the same council in August. So, there, I can't give you any answer on that. But, you need to know that when you go month-to-month, it can be 30 days. And I can sit up here and say, "We know all the things, we don't know all the things." And I just have to be upfront about that.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. But we enjoy working with you guys all the time.
Yes. And the other, the other thing I will say is, I mean, obviously, the mayor does want to make you feel comfortable, which is why we are working with you on this portion.
Right.
Yes, I don't want you to say, "No, it's just gonna..." So, I mean, we will work with you as long as we can and have the power.
Okay.
We do those, please.
Which is obvious.
Please, please stay around, I got some slides on my shoulder.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, sir. I'd like to put a microphone.
I think I should talk to Mr. Gerken first. Kind of speaking on behalf of the school, but also not as a district attorney, but as a soccer coach for the girls' team and representative of the boys' team as well. As we were midway through our season this year, the track folks showed up and said we're about to start working on this track, got to go. And we were about to have to lose games or it was a mess. And I went to Ozzy at the rec department, he called Colby Reeding and said, "Make this work." And the rec department went out of their way to allow us to play at East Gate, moving goals around, putting goals back for the rec league to finish up. I don't know how many hours they spent trying to accommodate us. And it went over so well that our parents and kids, you know, they said, "Our kids grew up playing out here, it was kind of like a homecoming." And it was really nice. And Ozzy, I just wanted to tell you on behalf of the entire school system and the soccer team, we really appreciate what you did because you saved our season and we really appreciate that, so, thank you.
Anybody's playoffs?
You leave, Dave? Go, go.
Thank you, yes.
Now I want our banquet, I'm sorry.
Have a great banquet, I love you, congratulations. I'll just reiterate, that just goes to show the great camaraderie and organizational skill of the personal system of the city. So, thank you all for being involved in that. Okay. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? So, with that, I'll go to final comments. Mayor?
Okay, I got quite a bit. We'll let you know that the guy that's doing the tank and helicopter painting should start next week. Still continue to work with the Bell Helicopter and RMCI project. I was on the phone with them almost at the start of this meeting today, still trying to resolve some issues with them, but it's looking very, very positive, like all that's going to happen. Tennis court meeting on the 12th to try to figure out how we're going to move forward. Ms. Blackman, when I tell you, city government works slow, we've been trying to build these tennis courts for three years. And it is, it just takes forever to get things done. Military flags, we have 70 more to put out, so, we talked in staff meetings this morning about going down the other side of Broad Street because we want to stay in a slow traffic area and we just think that'll look good, so, we're going to do that. Joe has a contract together for ECor for us to sell them a piece of property. Hope to have that together the next meeting for, they will build a new $50,000 square foot warehouse, so, Joe's trying to get all the details worked out on that. Ozark 101 starts tomorrow, it's a lease at 911. Since our last meeting, we had forestry field days out in Mattson and we had Araton, Ozark and Skipperville's fifth grader, that is a lot of fifth graders in one spot, but it was a great day, those kids really enjoyed it out there. The entertainment district map that we have downtown, we're going to have that ready for y'all next time. We're going to take in Ryan's new Magnolia Garden area and take it on down the road like we did for Crawdad with, where it went on us to Ozark Baptist Church, so, y'all will get to see that next time. Also, y'all might have seen where we scanned it and posted, put it online, but this is a warrant officer magazine that goes nationwide and they not only put us on the front cover of it, it was our one-year anniversary of the Warrant Officer Museum, which I couldn't believe it had been that long. They even did such a good job that they rearranged our sign and photoshopped it in where you can read the sign and the photos. Thought that was pretty cool. Also, just want to let you know that Fairhope is coming to Enterprise to play in the semifinals of baseball state championship. And because of Mr. Denise Ellis and us having a friend of the coach at Fairhope, they're all staying in Ozark. So, they have 16 rooms ready for two nights at McRae's, so, Wednesday and Thursday night, they'll be here. Also, want to let you know that Days Inn is sold. We had a chance to meet with the new owners yesterday, they're planning on totally rehabbing that facility and they said they thought it was going to take them about six months or so once they got started, so, very positive. The fire pumps, I don't know if y'all are familiar with us or not, but we have three fire pumps on the airport that was installed in '07, '08 timeframe and that was done where the city and the utility board put up a bunch of money to do some things back then. And then in the agreement, it says once the maintenance has to be done on, that the Aviation College and Bell Helicopter will split that cost. Two of the pumps are bad, they got to change the pumps out to the tune of $450,000. Bell and the Aviation College is prepared to pay that, but I just want to let you know in case you hear.
Okay. I was so prepared for this. I was like, "Bye!"
They, they have both acknowledged that they know they, they got to pay for it, so. The next thing I want to show y'all, I did a presentation at Rotary on the sports complex and I pulled some slides out of it to show you just some, a few little things here that, if I can get this to work. All right, just going to the next slide. Am I driving this? Okay, that just, that's our general layout, I did that for, in case there was people here that were not aware of what we were doing, the 231 side and the Roy Parker Road side, just going to the next one, you go through these pretty quick. That's showing you Roy Parker Road side, that is what we originally laid out as lots across that size. And you'll notice that far right-hand one is much, much larger. The reason for that is there's some wetlands on that, so, you know, if we were able to develop that, we'll lose part of that bigger lot. All right, that shows the 231 side. That is now looking like, that will be more like maybe four partials at some point there. Going to the next one.
Where, uh, Mayor, where's Blackman in comparison to that?
Almost in the center. And then that just shows, is a little map that shows the layout and kind of gives you a feel for what's around it. You can see Roy Mesick big pond up there, you can see the, where the Dodge dealership is there to the, to the left-hand side. Am I supposed to be able to point with this?
I'm sure it's on, Mayor.
Okay. There's the pond, here's Mo's right here, so, that just gives you an idea. And Mo's actually owns this lot here and he's actually interested in if we can pull a access road through here is where he can develop that and possibly come out of on the school board, in front of the school board property as well. But going to the next one. All right. One of the reasons I'm showing y'all this is because once we get these bids back on clearing this property, we're going to need to move forward and clear this property to move to the next stages. These are two turn lanes that would be required. And you can see, I've already sent that to the state and had them, this was their response. Yes, these will qualify for a trip to funding and I believe this will be a competitive project. What Mr. White is saying there is they'll basically go to bat for us on trying to get the funding for this, but I've got to be able to show this is a legit project and move forward because there's deadlines on applying for this money. But, take two turn lanes there, there's no telling, Ryan, that'd probably be six or eight hundred thousand or more.
Or more.
So, anyway, just going to the next slide. All right, this is a, a map that we made that shows what is called the wetlands. We bid this out and we rejected them yesterday. The reason we, one of the reasons we rejected them is because we had them clearing this entire spot that's in our, in our boundary, property boundary. We've decided that we want to take that out because the permitting costs were so high. And then, once we get it cleared and we start the design phase, then we can come back and we can say, "Okay, we need just a small portion of that wetlands cleared and we can do the permitting for just that small area and save a lot of money." But I did want to point out, everybody must talk about how wet this is. It is, it is wet, but one of the problems, right in here behind the Blackmans, it's kind of like we've created a dam, there's an 18-inch pipe in that creek. It releases about a four-foot pipe. So, what's happening, and I actually rode out there one day when it was raining, and the Blackmans are right, when it hits that pipe and it's coming from all the way back up on Roy Mesick property, all the way down through there, there's several hundred acres draining to there, then it hits that pipe and it just spreads and runs out. Well, this area over in... the wetlands for starters. And going to the next slide. All right, these are some trees that are in there. When we meet with the bidder, it gets, we want to be able to ask him to go in and clear as many of these large trees as we can, so we can come back and try to lay out and design, keeping as many of those as intact as we possibly can. Going to the next slide. This was just to show y'all, we've already, where you see this black felt paper, we've already removed asbestos off of this house, and we are still undecided, we may come back and decide we want to renovate that at some point, if it'll work out. And that was just a couple of pictures, I'm not sure why I left that one in there, I used it in the Rotary program. All right, this is, I went to Crenshaw County and met with them, they have a 145-acre project up there. The reason I wanted to show you this one is they are a lot like we are. Rolling hills, very, it slopes a lot, has a lot of water on it, and the, what they did, and they've been working on this project for four years, but they went in with their civil engineer, and they leveled out this spot up here, and this is a RV parking area. When you come off of this hill right here, you'll be able to see, it's probably a 25- or 30-foot drop down to this lake. Same way over here on this side, it slopes back up, they created a flat spot here for these football fields, for this track and field section, big flat spot here, and then they did the same thing over here. That's the kind of thing we have to do to be able to lay this out, that's the reason that concept drawing that we had in the beginning is really working. We got to, we got to go in there, do the topo, and figure out exactly where we can create these spots, and then figure out exactly what we want to put in there. But going to the next slide. All right, this just shows you, you can see this elevation increase, this lake is right in here. It's not all in this picture here, but you can see they've created the walking trail, they got the benches, trash cans, they've already got the streetlights in there, the pad mount, transformers and all for the, for their RV park, something that we won't have, but they're on 331 and thought that would be a good attraction for them. Going to the next. Got a bridge built in there, you can see that creek that's running in this property's about five or six feet wide, quite a bit of water flowed through there. Going to the next. You can see their, their lake out there, and they're incorporating all this, this sports complex around this lake. And, and that's pretty much what I wanted y'all to show y'all, but when we get the bid back to clear the property, we can't do the topo until we get the property cleared, so it's hard for us to advance and move forward for this until we get that timber cleared. So Ryan's working on putting the package back together, and with Ozzy, I'm trying to put it back out for bid, and we'll be back to y'all whenever we do that. I wanted to show y'all that, several people had said they knew I did it at Rotary and they wanted to, you know, I didn't go into all the detail that we went into at Rotary, but.
Have we already contacted an engineering firm for all of this?
We, we're working with Polly. Polly's working up paperwork to present to y'all at the next meeting on what their fees would be over a long phase on doing this. And also Joe Donofro, we haven't gotten to that point, he doesn't know what to design until we know what kind of area we have there, but yeah, we've been working with Joe Donofro, which is, you know, concept type stuff, but all that'll be coming to y'all later.
But shouldn't we do the engineering portion first, so that before we started clearing these things?
Yeah, we can.
Why?
You just can't? They can't, you can't determine what's got, what you got room to build at that point. That's the exact same way Crenshaw County did.
You got to clear where you know what land you can use, where you can put point, that's what you got to do for it.
But you said you bid it, and you threw it out because you don't want to mess with the wetland now?
We want to wait, wait on the wetland.
What kind of bid was that then?
It went from 405 to 830.
4095 to 833, two.
Eight, eight thirty-two, the?
That was, the lowest bid was 4095, the highest bid was 8332.
Two others and 500,000.
Yeah.
So about a million dollars just to see?
It would be a lot, it would be, no, that's possible, the project's possible, but he's, this is just, not with the rec department, but this is something that you would have to do.
What kind of, what kind of timeline are we talking on that? And the reason I'm asking is the same thing that I was just telling Ms. Blackman, like, are you, are we looking at a timeline of this council's gonna have to approve that?
The clearing?
Yeah, but then that obligates the next council, you know, for half a million dollars.
The clearing would be done under this council.
Does another budget need to die?
And that is definitely not a budget to die. Definitely not.
At some point, we would have to do a bond issue, my career.
That's correct.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
We, we don't even know the total project cost.
What would, what would we do? It's gotta be done in phases, anyway.
Well, you got to get through these phases to where you can design it and go after the bond issue. And, and we have money, we have outfits out there that we can go after money, but I got to have a concept to be able to sales project.
So we would have to basically agree to either take a loan, which we know we don't like to do, go into our reserve for clearing the land, contract, however much it's gonna be a contract with the engineers, to come up with what it's gonna look like. I guess now I know. All right, what's up?
All right, one more thing on Crenshaw County. They've got a CD of cow meat of 13,000 feet, and a CD of 2,600 feet. If they can do it, we can do it. That's all I got.
It is daunting, it's daunting, okay.
I don't have a question, I can give it out.
That was a lot of information, that was a lot of information. I feel positive, though.
I know we, I think we can do it, I think, I know we can do it, it's just gonna take a while, we just got to put it together, his other CD has it, I think it's gonna be a great thing.
Thank you.
Their, their project's four years old.
That's what I'm saying.
I just have mine on a bench.
What made me know about their project was they just built the, bid the structures on there. They bid it, this is their third phase, they're about to build all the structures, and then the fourth phase is coming back and building all the ball fields and the track and all around, so that's how they, but you can't get finished if you don't start.
You're right. Councilman Jackson?
How many years did it take them, buddy?
No, no, they're still working.
Yeah, I don't guess. To some extent, it's like I said earlier, this council might not see.
The next council might not see it.
On the edge. Now, Mayor, back to the Days Inn, is that what, I was wondering about the reputation of the company, is?
Oh, Denise, I cannot even tell you the name of the company, but Denise Ellis.
Park Inn is what they refer to.
She did a little research on it in staff meeting this morning, said it looked very, like a very nice place. I was not familiar with it.
Anything would probably be better than what we have.
It's part of the rest and rise.
Now, now, that's, yeah, that's, the other thing I had was in reference to what Kirk Adams, our DA, mentioned earlier, I just wanted to sound on that one, because I've heard some say that no one wants to use Eastgate Park, you know, why is it, this type thing, but you, you can see that it ended up being a shining light for that particular East Gate. And, and I've always been of the opinion, you need parts and rigs throughout all your neighborhoods, you know, not just one here, you know, there, you know, kind of reminded me of a point, some, some homeowners in that area made that they seem like they're estranged from the city, you know, because they're out there. But I'd like to see more use of these cases of service. The key is deserved that. For instance, we put a lot of money into the gymnasium, it only needs some heat pump systems in there now, for heating and cooling, and the DA could utilize that, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Councilman Braw?
I just want to say, last Thursday night, the One Eagle Foundation put on the Eagle Showcase at Carroll High School, which showed off really all the schools in the system, and all the different things the teachers and the students are doing, and it was very impressive night, great turnout, I think over 300, close to 350 people in attendance at that, and it showed off all the good things that we've got going on with our Ozark City Schools here, and it was just a great night, great night, great event.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrow?
Yes, I was asked to announce that the Vivian Adams School is gonna have their dedication of Dr. G. Robert Bob Crosby Voice Scout Memorial Pathway this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at the school, and all are invited to attend that.
My question for council, did everyone receive their invitations for Carroll High School's graduation and honors? So please make sure that you were there. R T P, everything you needed to do for that. I just want to say thank you to everyone that came to the show over the weekend at the Flowers Center, thank you for evening supporting that. And the next thing that will be there will be the Summer Kids Camp Show.
Madam President, I shared with someone in Allison Powell's office at Carroll High, that we would be at the elementary meeting municipality doing that.
For honors, for honors, but.
I really hate that, I wish it was scheduled for week 10.
But we were able to be there for graduation, because Friday is our travel day, he's back.
And I, I know you've heard this before, but the city is still in ownership of about 15 acres. That was at one time proposed for the sports complex off of college. I think what we can do to help with some of the funding is sell that land.
It is for sale.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we put it up last year.
Yeah, but it's sold, yeah, so we can.
We can't force people to buy it.
I know what you, I don't know, we didn't, I haven't seen a, I haven't seen a for sale sign, we usually just place a for sale sign on the property where people can see it, we're not, we're not putting.
Stanley's gonna take care of that. Yes, please, somebody write us a check. Okay, so with that, I will call this meeting to a close, and we'll begin the next meeting in three minutes. We're gonna go ahead, we're gonna go ahead and get this started, okay. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We are going to begin this evening with prayer led by Councilman Infiger and the pledge, and I will lead in the pledge for the weekends.
May your name be praised, dear Father, we just thank you so much for this day that you've given us, Lord, and the blessings of life, Lord. We ask that you just look up this meeting, Lord, and that we make the decision that would be with honor in your name, Lord, and we ask that you just bless this city in the mighty way, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Attention, Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic and to the citizens of our motherland, in the name of our liberty and justice.
Thank you. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on April 15, 2025. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve amendments from the regular council meeting held April 15, 2025, move for their approval.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving these minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we'll set the agenda for this evening, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set the agenda tabling item number nine and adding item number 10, a lease agreement with Blackman Body Shop for $400 a month through August, and then months a month after that.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any just further discussion on setting the agenda as amended? All in favor of setting the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is approval of expenditure in excess of budget. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve an excess budget, street department expenditure.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Take your seat.
Do we have any further discussion on this budget expenditure, or excess budget expenditure? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is an excess, ex, I can't say that tonight, excess budget expenditure for Eastgate Park. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve an excess budget, Eastgate Park expenditure.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this Eastgate Park expenditure? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is to approve the mayor to execute an Alabama Tourism Grant Agreement. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, make a motion to approve the mayor to execute the Alabama Tourism Department Grant, move for its adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, do we have any further discussion on this approval? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is a request to approve a change order for renovation for Flowers Center. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the change order for renovation of the Flowers Center in the amount of $5,760.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this request? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
To actually go see that, to hit?
No, because it was approved in the thing. Okay, okay. Item number nine was tabled. Item number 10 is a lease agreement with Blackman Body Shop. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve a lease agreement with Blackman Body Shop for $400 a month for four months, and then month to month after that.
Thank you.
Would that be at the same amount, right, if the $400? Yes.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this lease agreement? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Please note that you have a court, court and a financial court. I'll go to final comments. Councilman Infiger? Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I want to say, I went to the restroom.
I figured you were talking. We called it.
I went in the restroom.
We called it.
You went in, you went to the bathroom.
It was really funny. It's like, that was the funny thing, when you walked in, when you walked in, you're right there.
They started praying before I could get up.
It's all good, it's all good, thank you. Councilman Braw?
We made it four or five minutes.
Well, what's lovely is we're the council, and we can decide, and you say, "Three minutes is too short, we need to make it five."
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No further comments from me, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on adjournment? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I call this.